All right, it is six thirty-two. I will call this official city council business meeting to our Monday, April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. It's officially a study meeting. It won't be taken post tonight. We'll be hearing a couple of presentations, but officially it is an official city council business meeting. So we've got to follow the same protocols as we would do otherwise. So we will start our meeting as we always do. If you would, stand and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you to everybody who is joining us online. And thanks to everybody here in the council chair staff. Thank you for being here. Our first order of business council is to approve tonight's agenda. Under our agenda, we have nothing under item two introductory, or under three consent, or four hearings resolutions and ordinances. The only we get to number five, our organizational business, we've got two items. Item five point one is a discussion on franchise fees, and item five point two is an update on federal grants and what that impact might mean for the city of Bloomington. And once we wrap that up, we will adjourn. So unless there are any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight, I would move the agenda as stated. Motion and dissent by council member Carter to accept tonight's agenda as stated. Now for the council discussion on this, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries seven zero, and we have an agenda. We will jump item five point one on our franchise fees discussion. We have the gang of four in front of us. We've got Julie Long, our city engineer, Bob Simons, senior civil engineer, Emma Strasser, sustainability coordinator, and Laurie Conner, CFO, to present this item for us. So you're taking it away?
Yes.
So your answer.
Thank you. Our goal tonight is twofold. One is to answer the questions that you all asked us at the last organizational business when this meeting was presented. And then second, to get some direction from you so we don't have to prepare eight different ordinances. So we're gonna do a discussion on our two new categories, which is retaining walls and sustainability. So this first graphic shows you the retaining walls all with around the city within the city right of way. Retaining wall work has been funded using the general fund, and then council is aware that we often do carryovers, mainly because the forty-five thousand dollars that's in the budget doesn't really put a dent into our retaining wall needs. For instance, there's a retaining wall project coming before you next Monday, and that engineer's estimate somewhere between eight hundred and nine hundred thousand dollars. As you can imagine, it takes a really long time to be able to fund that, because we like to pay as our go, as we go. So that will come in forward on Ninetieth Street next week, along with in future years, we have West Bush Lake Road, and then some retaining walls on the Normandale Lake Boulevard project. So we were looking for some additional funding. So this is a picture of the condition of some examples of some failing retaining walls. You can see that they have visible deterioration, and a lot of retaining wall actual structure is behind the wall. And so the one that I mentioned on Ninetieth Street was a beautiful looking wall, and it still managed to fall over. So this isn't always our best judgment of the tiebacks and their health. So I will turn it over to Emma now.
So now we'll dive into the newly proposed sustainability franchise fee section. And last time, we discussed one of the staff recommendations to use funding to fund energy efficiency residential projects. This comes more context. This comes from our energy action plan. We completed it under the after twenty twenty goals for residential of having energy disclosure, but then there was a follow-up initiative to finance energy efficiency improvements, similar to what was already done in the Housing and redevelopment authority. So those programs. So that is where this is coming from for some context. Left side here. Here, I'll flick it for you. They're not moving. There we go. Last time, also, there are questions about beyond the direct home owner, what are community benefits of saving energy, being able to explain that to residents. So overall, the communities benefiting from less pollution, from generating energy, also less pressure on the energy grid, especially during peak demand, where we have power outages, and build new expensive power plants. Money saved on energy bills can be reinvested in the local economy, and also overall boosting community resilience, especially during extreme So city has invested in the past few years in energy education and disclosure. A reminder with the Home Energy Squad, the HRA has been buying down visits for residents since twenty thirteen, and then ten to sale energy disclosure. Both of these programs are helping residents understand how their home is currently functioning, what are recommended upgrades, and how to finance those. So we have all those pieces, but we have heard feedback that still financing projects can be difficult. To talk about some of these energy upgrades, obviously, some of them, like LED lighting switch, channel light bulb, doesn't have a huge cost to it. But then there are larger initiatives that are being recommended in these disclosure reports, like attic insulation, wall insulation, high efficiency appliances. So those are things that folks are looking for potential financing for. Okay, perfect. So we have over a hundred years, as we talked about last time, to complete all of the Bloomington's housing stock, and the estimated need for attic insulation, for wall insulation. We're on track with our current pace for three hundred years to meet those goals, as two examples. So one of the questions is always, what are our neighbors doing? And how are those programs structured? So staff did some investigation. We have, we're aware of twenty cities that's similar to us buy down Home Energy Squad visits that are provided through the utilities. Also similar to us, there are about fifteen cities that have home improvement loans. So one of the questions from last time was, how is our current home improvement loan through the HRA doing? We found that over the past two and a half years, that it was one or two that were added for insulation. And then we saw windows and siding, which are our top recommended energy efficiency actions to do first, but that could be tied into that. Something to note with our current program is it goes to eighty percent AMI, and something that, looking at how other cities have structured loans, and what staff would recommend, is that we actually raised that to be higher, recognizing that there would be more conversations of what that specifically would mean, but open that up so that more residents would have access to that lending opportunity. And then something during our research that we also found is more and more cities are looking into climate grants, cost share and rebate programs. So here's a list of the different cities that, in addition to loans, also decided to set up specific financing for, for example, for lease, specifically for insulation. Other communities have looked at having a broader scope of what those funds could be used for, but having energy be a theme for all of them. So as an example, there are also questions about the role of the energy utilities in this. So this is just looking at one of the energy score reports for wall insulation. What we do is we call out the incentives. So you'll see a fifteen hundred dollar rebate for wall insulation. So that's coming from CenterPoint Energy. Both CenterPoint and Excel Energy are required by the state through the Eco Act of twenty twenty-one to, for electric utilities, to spend up to one point seven five percent of their sales each year. And then natural gas, one percent of their sales towards energy saving and climate saving actions. So that totals for Excel, for their Minnesota territories, about six hundred million dollars over the course of three years. And then for, I believe is around sixty million for, on the natural gas side, for CenterPoint Energy. So that's where the rebates that we're seeing in our community are coming from. There's also tax credits that federally are available. One thing to note is that for both the rebates and tax credits, you have to wait for them. So if you don't have the upfront financing, it's hard to go forward with the projects, because you're waiting between for two months for a rebate, or, you know, up to a year almost, if you work to complete a project today and then file for next year's taxes. Okay, feedback from other communities. So one of the questions was, how do we know this is going to be successful? What have we learned from others, talking around to different cities? Definitely more interested in doing follow-ups of seeing what has been the impact. Edina shared their recent staff report that they shared with their council. This was from their climate action fund. So this wasn't a loan. This was a cost share program, but they found that ninety-six thousand dollars in public investment has led to almost a million dollars of private investment in the community. And then St. Louis Park, they did a survey about a year ago, and they found about three force of the respondents said that the cost share program motivated them to complete an energy project that essentially they wouldn't have done. Eight percent said, no, I wouldn't complete the project. But, you know, they, they got, you know, benefited from saving more money, but they would have done it otherwise. So those were two points that we were able to find from talking with other communities, existing programs. And then Funding Administration, going back to conversations about maybe doing this with Bloomington's HRA, combining programs, initial conversations with staff, definitely seeing pathways forward and opportunity in that, knowing that you would have to be going through details and do a cost analysis, what it looks like to do internal versus hiring out the service. We also had an initial conversation with Center for Energy Environment. They do lending for nineteen Minnesota communities. And so we talked to them about what their services would be, and if council was interested in moving forward, there'd be further conversation of what would be the best structure to go doing this internally, or hiring out for a financing program. And along with that, with program development, recognizing that with any new program, we want to make sure that there's community engagement. So next steps would be allowing time for staff to listen to the community, get more feedback on what those income qualifications would be, what are the exact, you know, energy actions, broader than that. Also racial equity impact assessment. We would also want to make sure, since franchise fees are paid from homeowners and renters, that multifamily buildings were thought about in the process of financing, and how we can benefit those buildings as well, and those residents, and then ultimately coming back to council with an approval of financing structure for a program. Now, another question that we had was, why energy? Are they interested in other areas of sustainability? So Bob will get to that with the survey question that we put out. But other cities have definitely looked at their plans around climates or urban forestry. We have two plans on the horizon that are being worked out. So recognizing that, although we've talked about a first step responding to the energy action plan, that in the future, this could be a way that other cities have financed their climate work as well. With that, I will pass it to Bob.
All right, thank you. I'll give a little bit of information on the public engagement that we've done, since we met with you guys back in March. We had an open house held last Thursday, the seventeenth, at the rehearsal hall, fortunately during a thunderstorm, so we didn't get the best turnout. But we did have two attendees attend. And historically, we haven't had the greatest turnout for the open houses for this franchise fees event, but we had two people attend. The two that attended, both of those were along the mindset where they prefer to see something other than franchise fees be the funding mechanism for these, these components, for example, but they were not in favor of franchise fees. One individual, they'd mentioned that they were not in favor of road diets or decreasing the roadway width in order to accommodate pets and bikes users in the area. So they got into a little bit of a conversation on trails and pets and bikes. We've used our franchise fee website, which you've had in place for a few years now, to get the word out, and also through e-subscribe and social media. We did a post a couple of weeks ago about the event, and then also last week, just prior to the event, to get the word out there. And with that, we also have a Let's Talk Bloomington page that's still open right now. And on that page, we have all the information that we have on our website as well, frequently asked questions, all the information that we brought to the open house. But we also posted a question on there, as city council were to approve an increase in franchise fees, how should the funds be used? And we put five different categories on there, one, of course, and the sixth one being all of the above. But they could check all that apply, all that they were interested in. As of this afternoon, we had thirty-eight responses. So as you can see, we had, well, five different categories. We had financing home energy projects to lower utility bills, financing business energy projects to lower utility bills, sustainability projects to reduce air pollution, and then retaining wall improvements, and additional trail and sidewalk improvements. The top vote getters were additional trail and sidewalk improvements, as you can see, and then financing home energy to lower utility bills, and then also retaining wall improvements. We will have that page up and open here through May second, but that's the response we've received thus far. I'll pass it over to Laurie with, wrapped up.
So our first slide, you've seen, you mentioned all of these slides the last time we presented them. Then again, in twenty twenty-three, when we went through our last model increase, to bring it to the five dollars and ninety-five cents per residential, per utility, we were estimating that for twenty twenty-six, we would come in and be asking for six dollars and seventy cents, which was a seventy-five cent increase with that. And then, and it was across the board, the same percentage increase for all of the energy users there at thirteen percent. And then we have the three graphs. And I'll go from the increase percentage wise. What we found over the last few years is that the users in each of the categories had changed significantly since twenty twenty. So to bring up their percentage of actual usage in each area, their percentage increases changed based on the number of users in each one. So with a million dollar for sustainability and retaining walls, it would be a sixteen percent increase for the residential at a total of ninety-three cents, or a dollar eighty-six a month. And then we looked at sustainability at a half a million dollars in retaining walls. That is at the fifty-eight cents for the, at ten percent. And again, I'm just focusing on the residential piece. And then if we just did nothing for sustainability, but did the retaining walls, it's twenty-three cents. And that would be what we said, increase on the residential piece on that grouping. So the recommendation that we brought before the council before was the one million dollars for sustainability efforts, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for retaining walls, and then normal inflation of existing categories that we have, franchise fee, would bring it to thirteen dollars and seventy-six cents for both combined utilities per month. Again, that's a change of the dollar eighty-six a month from what we have at the five ninety-five. So these were the options that we've put in both memo and then in the presentation. And we are looking to see if we can have some direction of any interest on council to at least bring us down to one or two options, or if, not moving forward on option A, we would look to bring, come back again, again, next year this time. And instead of a fixed rate, we'd be looking at a percentage, because several of the cities around us are going to a percentage rate increase in their rates. Option B is the twenty-three cents for the retaining walls. C is just a half million for sustainability and no retaining walls. D is half a million and retaining walls. And E is the million dollars and retaining. We have a variety.
Absolutely.
What kind of discussion you'd like?
Well, I'd like to start with council's questions, and then we can get into the discussion about the direction. But if you have any questions that you'd answer, I've got a couple. The first slide that you put up, that seems like a lot of retaining walls in a city of this size. It, am I imagining that, or it just seems like an inordinate amount of retaining walls?
It is a large number of retaining walls. And one of the issues that we have is they're built in the public right of way. But we don't have records back in the fifties and sixties that say who built them, and therefore who owns them. So we have to assume that because they're in the public right of way, that they're ours, because we don't have any data that shows anything else.
Do we have data? How many are there?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know that answer.
All right. Well, that, that's one question that I had. The other question, when we first had this conversation about franchise fees, one of the draws was that whereas property taxes are for residential, commercial, industrial, and so on, property taxes include a larger group, including schools, churches, any nonprofit, anybody that typically wouldn't pay property taxes has to pay a franchise fee. Do we know what that delta is? The folks who typically wouldn't pay property taxes, what do they now make? Or what would they be paying in these franchise fee scenarios? Is there any idea? Give me a ballpark.
That's certain. I fully understand where I could find those, those numbers for you. So you're looking to see if we had not put franchise fee in?
How many, how many properties do we have in the city that don't pay property taxes because of schools, public buildings, nonprofit status, and so on? So then they would be paying franchise fees, because they wouldn't be exempt, because if they get electricity and gas, they're paying franchise fees.
I would need to check on that.
Okay. Council additional questions, or just clarifications here before we start our discussion on the, on the direction? Council member Rebus, and then council member Dallas Outrow, council member Rebus. Oh, I'm sorry, that was a, sold. The danger. Council member Rebus.
I might have missed it when I went through the agenda, but I, I'm curious, what is the total, if there is anything available for us to look at, how much we collect in franchise fees from residents as compared to businesses, and the three types of businesses that we have, the on-demand, non-on-demand, large CEIs. So you have any of that breakdown on this?
Mayor, council, we, on average, on an annual basis, bring in eight point six million, and sixty percent of that is residential, forty percent is commercial. And that's the breakout generally on the energy, when we had conversations with the utilities of where the usage is, is that sixty percent is residential, forty percent is commercial.
Additional questions, council member Nelson?
Yeah. If we didn't increase the funding for the retaining walls, what is the risk? We already have funding for them. Can we just draw that out and take longer to repair those? Or are we just a situation where that's not feasible? So if we don't do this, we then have to essentially increase property taxes to do that?
Mayor and council, right now, as Bob indicated earlier, we're putting forty-five thousand dollars a year in that budget.
Yeah.
And we're doing some carryovers, and we're going to spend pretty much everything they have on this one project to get it done. And then we would need to accumulate more or have carryovers, and carryovers is not a certainty at any point. So it's either property taxes really slow the retaining walls, and, and so I think it's a kind of critical situation on some of these.
Hold on a moment. Thank you, Merrick. So when we look at the retaining walls, they're all, all the way across here, and it seems like retaining walls seem to impact kind of more similar to, like we have been using our, our franchise fees around roads and sidewalks and trails. Is that true, that it would impact schools, churches, and that type of thing?
The retaining walls are in the public right of way. So yeah, they are more closely related to trails and roads. They probably do impact some schools, like we have sidewalks and walking routes to those, those schools, but there are, there are other retaining walls that aren't adjacent to sidewalks as well.
Just more of a curiosity is that. Then with the HRA component of it, I'm not sure if anybody can answer this one. I think it was forty to fifty loans, I think, for the packet, that are eligible each year. My understanding is, is that once those dollars kind of return to the city, we have a little more freedom with, with those dollars could be used with? Am I, am I understanding that correctly?
We have the expert answers.
Well, I can just shout from the back. Actually, those
Please join us, join us.
So that program is funded through CDVG dollars, and actually, when they come back, they are still considered CDB, CDBG dollars. So we can use them in any way that CDBG is eligible to be used, but we still have those restrictions. We don't necessarily have to use them for a loan program.
And so the restriction, if you decided to do another loan with it, would still be at that eighty percent AMI?
Yes, that's correct.
So it doesn't wash that, that out, when you kind of do that. And then, so if we were to, you know, do that top option of the, we got all the money for sustainability, what would that equate to in terms of loans? Would it be, you know, forty or fifty, or does it just depend on how we cut that out for the insulation?
It depends on, it depends on how we would structure that. So for insulation, for example, you're looking at six thousand dollars. So again, one house could want to do a high efficiency water heater, put in an air source heat pump, replace their AC. So it could be multiple things. But typically, what cities have done is cap, you know, ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars. So then it would essentially be dividing that out.
And then one last question here. If we were to take out, could we levy through the HRA, restrict it, if we levied a, a loan program out with, with those dollars, right? We'd be okay doing that, right? If we levied it out, we wouldn't have that eighty percent cushion, no?
Yes, Merrick, that's correct. The HRA, so the, the council approves the HRA levy amount, and then within that, the HRA can kind of dictate like how those dollars are spent exactly. But yes, generally, that is correct. The HRA levy can be used for a wider variety of things than the CDBG.
At this point, we pretty much have that all spoken for, right, though, in terms of how we'd be levying, if we had all of that?
Yes, the budget for this year at least is set. I know for next year, because of the recent split between the port and the HRA, and, you know, the ins and outs of what happened there, the HRA is levying below the max. So there is opportunity to, for the HRA to increase levy.
And that impact for that, that tax, though, would be across, across the city, right? Thank you. Council member Dallas Outrow.
Are all of those retaining walls actually necessary? Like, has anybody done a, any kind of surveying, understanding? I mean, you know, the, the retaining walls, they look nice and everything, but, you know, are they required? Was there some structural requirement for them, and, and that's why they, they exist? And do we, do we have the option of, like, something else that wouldn't require the ongoing maintenance?
We have. We have essentially assigned them a score somewhere to our pavement condition index from zero to a hundred, and graded them all. And if they're short, small walls, we normally work with the property owner to grade them out. So nobody has to have a infrastructure replacement fund in the future. But the ones like on Ninetieth that are really tall, that isn't really a possibility. So we have looked at a variety of different solutions.
So all the ones on here would be the ones that you didn't find an alternative for?
Those are all the walls. We're not, we're not judging. We didn't grade them and just bring you, like, the ones that are, we think are failing, because we have only done a visual look at it. We have not done any training radar to see if those tiebacks are failing.
Sure.
So it's not as sophisticated as that. So, and because we have the one on Ninetieth that fell, and it looked beautiful. And we didn't want to mislead you and say, oh, this one's not, is going to be fine.
Sure.
Because we, we're not confident.
Sure. Okay. All right. I just was trying to assess whether or not All right, I just was trying to assess whether or not wh- what amount of money was actually needed to, 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 for better way to put it, to shore up the walls, literally. Because maybe not all of them are actually going to need that if they, if we have other alternatives like grading or something like that.
We've worked with our maintenance division and their estimate was another two hundred thousand dollars a year. Plus some of, some of the walls are on state aid routes and then they're eligible to use state aid funding. So we're thinking if we can combine that with what's already in the budget of, so about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, plus the state aid funds would address the program, the problem as we see it right now. Hopefully it stays that way.
And what's the, what is the, um, what is the timeline for, let's say we do that funding? What's the timeline then for getting all the walls up to code, if you will?
Um, it will be a rolling asset management program. So it, I don't think we'll ever be done. I think as we catch up, other walls will age and get onto the list. So it'll kind of just be a rolling progress.
Okay, um, how long do they generally last?
It really depends. Are you timber? Are you, um, the concrete block? If you've ever seen some of the concrete spall, that's because older walls didn't have the salt requirement that they now have to pass with the testing. So I don't know that I can actually answer that question.
The newer walls that we're putting in, the big block walls, they have like a seventy-five to a hundred year design life.
Okay.
Uh, the older ones, the smaller modular block walls, the timber walls, I'd say probably venture to guess probably more in like the thirty-five to fifty year. But that's, that, it all depends on the soils and stuff around them too as well, so.
And you're planning to change, change out all of the walls that exist to this new format wall that lasts seventy-five years or so, if possible?
No, that's, yes, if possible, yes, if possible. Some might be sheet pile walls, some might be the big block walls. So it'll, it, it all depends on the, yeah, definitely an upgrade to what they are currently.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember, what?
Hey, Mayor, have we looked at what would happen if we reduce PMP fundness instead of raising the rates? If we just say, hey?
My favorite topic ever.
I know. One year we're going to take a positive PMP, use all the funds to shore up a sustainability fund. So we can get that million dollars, take the rest of the money, get the retaining walls that need to get done, done. And whatever left we have for PMP, use that to finish out two roads or whatever we have to do before we get back to the cycle. Have we looked at that?
We have looked at that. When you pause the PMP, it does degrade the roads. It also creates an issue with staffing and engineering. Because we pay for our staff using the PMP capital funds. So a lot of, not everyone in the engineering division is paid through our capital funds. So we would have to limit, figure out how to eliminate that staff or reassign that staff um, in order to achieve that savings. So we have not figured out how to solve that issue. We did look at reducing the overlay, which is why we were able to not have as high of an increase that you're seeing with the franchise fees. Um, but we couldn't figure out how to pause it the entire year without doing some staff layoffs. So if that's council's direction, we can pursue that.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you. So if we were to move forward with the sustainability projects, are we set on the home energy program? And, um, within that, are we set on it being loans? Or would the next step to be to determine if it was loan, cost share, grant? Or at this price or at this, like the million dollar level, is it pretty much like it needs to be a loan?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, Senator Carter. Nothing is set at this point. Hearing direction from the last meeting that there is interest in loans over cost share. We've also seen that other communities have success with cost share. So at least from staff's perspective, there's flexibility within that. And having more community engagement and looking at those different thresholds and funding up with the finalized program for councils to be considered would be the recommendation.
That would be like the next step?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, because I would, before determining which one, I would love to understand the, you know, the pros and cons of programs.
Staff just doesn't want to get into that level of detail and investigation if we don't have a budget to work with.
Other questions, council? So just quick math here by, uh, and tell me this is right. And for option D, I just want to set some context here. So, so option D, where we would add retaining walls and stability projects that have a million dollars, fifty-eight percent or fifty-eight cent increase, and that's per month, correct? So fifty-eight cents per month is six dollars and ninety-six cents and it's for both utilities. So it'd be a total of, it'd be fourteen dollars a year increase per payer of franchise fee. It's not just households, but it's the per payer of the franchise. Well, this would be the, the single family homes, but it would be commensurate increases elsewhere. So it'd be an extra fourteen dollars a year for those specific projects. So retaining laws and sustainability projects funded at a half million dollars a year. So just, just to put the, the whole cost together in the context, for example, for option D.
What's the number again, Mr.?
Fourteen bucks a year. Question, Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I was wondering if we know how much the, um, school district has to pay for the entire program? Because I think that's also just paid by property taxes if I assume correctly. So do we know how much they have to pay? Because that is one of my challenges with the franchise fees in general. Part of it goes to the school district, which they just bloody property taxes to pay it. And they have, it's my understanding, fairly significant budget problem already, so.
Mayor, I think councilmember Nelson, it gets back to the mayor's earlier question, but I need to go back and research. Um, how many properties are taxed except? And we'll figure out how many, how many of those are schools and we'll see. I could see if you can sway whatever commercial rate that they might have. I don't know their utilization and, um, energy companies can't share that. So we'll see if the school district finance people can tell their the breakout if they can.
Hopefully they account for it.
Our Delisandro question?
Yeah, I'm switching to the sustainability questions now. Sorry, I was down the road with others for that second. Do we, how, how confident do we feel, given, given our track record so far with the number of families and the advantage of the improvement programs that do exist today? That if, if we said, okay, we need two point six four million dollars. If we did this franchise fee at five hundred thousand, that would take us five years to get the two and a half million that we need. We could get four hundred and forty houses a year up and running. We'd have to, that way we would get those, um, they would get all of those buildings up. And by then we would get that twenty fifty goal, right? That's kind of the math I'm doing in my head. How confident do we feel like we are that four hundred and forty homes will actually sign up to do the work? I mean, I know you can't, you can leave the meal to water, you can't, I can drink, I get that part. But like, given our track record of, of success in terms of getting folks to use the programs we do today, how, how, how confident do you feel like we are?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, councilmember Delisandro. I would say if we know there's a need, we've dedicated a staff member to do outreach. We know that other funding sources are being cut. So I would say, I mean, again, we haven't done this program, but looking at what other cities are seeing uptake in the program, I would say pretty confident that we can get the money out.
Yeah, okay. Right on, okay. And if, if, if you only have the money for attic insulation versus wall insulation, would, would you, would you do one program over the other? Would you give the customer the choice? Like, what was your thought on that?
For that, I would leave it open because every home is different. Um, I would actually recommend to have a suite of any of the recommendations that are done for energy disclosure programs to be able to finance those. So definitely no insulation is, is a big thing that we want to hit. But there's also some homes that have done that, but they would really benefit from a high efficiency, you know, furnace. So, um, having that flexibility based upon what the president needs, I think that's the most to go.
Okay, I'm asking that question because we have some pretty good data around attic and wall installation, but we, insulation, but we don't necessarily have in here, uh, much on, you know, the number of homes that have converted to hot water heater, you know, like, uh, electric water heaters or, you know, um, other electric ranges or the, you know, other electric choices. I'm just kind of curious if we were, we'd want to focus our energy, no pun intended, on, on actually doing a program for which we know if we like could take off these houses on this box, we would get the benefit that we were looking for. So I, I throw that out there just as something to think about. Not that we would necessarily, I understand your point, but maybe we give priority to those because we can track them more efficiently or we can, we can, we can be more certain that it, it will move the needle towards our climate goals. I mean, you know, for me, for example, I, I don't know that, I don't know that insulation is the best choice for me. I would, you know, certainly could get my water heater updated and that would be great. But do I, do I apply for this program before somebody who truly can move the mobile because of attic and wall insulation being such a big, powerful way of, of solving energy problems? So that's, I'm just thinking through that particular piece of it.
Can I?
Oh, please, quietly, yeah.
Just for ease of examples, I provided more detail on insulation. But through Excel and CenterPoint, we do get annual data on the rebates that are associated with a larger suite of programs. So we do know about water heaters and furnaces and, um, air source heat pumps. That's data that we'll be able to monitor and track.
Okay, all right, great. Thanks.
Councilmember Rebus?
Just follow up, there's going to be questions. How do we know a city, if, um, for instance, um, a group of homes are in need of updating their appliances? How do we get the facts that, um, you know, a given home or a given block in the city is being affected by not having up-to-date appliances or water heater or that?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, councilmember Rebus. So how we're getting that information is through the energy audits that the city buys down and that's the home energy squad. So when someone has a visit, we, uh, get data each year that kind of shows what the need is in our community. And then also through, um, our energy disclosure program, anyone who's selling a home, we get information on that home and what the need is. So that's how we're tracking overall where to target efforts.
So, so in what the worries, uh, if, and say, I have updated everything at home. We have water heater, dryer, uh, the water heater, uh, furnace also expanding. But we haven't told anybody that we've done that. Uh, so how would you find out a home has done that? If there is no audit, nobody has shown up to ask me, have you guys updated this? How do we know if all the homes are doing any improvements at all or not?
So if they apply, so for, um, if someone applies for an Excel Energy or CenterPoint Energy rebate for an upgrade that they did, that's how we're tracking. So if people want that rebate, then that's filed with the utilities and then they give us that data on the accounts. And we can get that data by census block and be able to track that. But if someone does it and doesn't apply for that rebate, we don't have a way.
So we don't have an exact number of homes that need improvement, so they don't need improvement, right?
Um, it is, we have an estimate based upon our housing stock. What we see on average with these disclosure reports and we're then applying that citywide based upon how the homes are, what we see when we go and do the audits. And so it is an estimate of what that means. But we're getting more and more data each year through disclosure with homes being sold. So that number is getting more and more accurate.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just quick follow-up, councilmember Rebus, uh, those questions. Would it be possible to work with building inspections to get permit records, particularly for water heaters and furnaces? I don't think you need a permit to do a washer and dryer, but yeah, the ones you should need a permit on. So you should be able to get that information. And then the other thing, just for clarification, when you talk about walls and attic, do you also talk about rim joists? Because the rim joists is typically in a lot of the houses built in the fifties and sixties has zero insulation. The walls are actually insulated usually, but there's a tremendous amount of KFOs in the rim joists. And that's actually one of the primary places you could easily go after to improve the efficiency of a house.
So, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, councilmember Nelson. And for your first question, yes, building inspections is a great partner. They are already pulling data, for example, around the age of AC units. So we're able to do more targeted messaging this summer on switching to a heat pump if your AC unit is older. So, uh, definitely that permit data comes in handy. So staff, we're looking into that and how we can leverage that information that the city already has. Um, as far as the rim joists, yes, I believe that was part of the conversation that comes up in the energy business.
Also, before we get too far down the rim joists, you have a hole here. Do you have more information? So staff right now is looking for, they've, they've got five options in front of us. They're looking for, to narrow it down. I'm hearing a lot of questions from staff that I think we could get answers to and it might help shape our decisions. What I might suggest, and tell me what y'all think about this, if we perhaps ask staff to, uh, examine or, or bring forward at a public hearing, that's our next step, correct? A public hearing. If we looked at two options, and I would say, I mean, if we wanted to do, for example, option A, no increase, or option B, the, the increase that I, the fourteen dollar a year that I kind of outlined earlier, just as our two options, kind of our, as our end markers, have staff answer some of our questions for us that we brought up and brought forward, have the public hearing and then figure out where we want to be, uh, from there. Does that seem to make sense or should we set the goalpost somewhere else or other thoughts on that? Councilmember Lemon?
I guess the question that I have is we're looking at picking those, if we go with two options to bring forward is, question I kind of ask myself is does it, if the retaining wall makes sense because that kind of fits with what we traditionally utilize it's for? But I'm having questions in my, my mind about, uh, the sustainability component of it and whether or not that really fits with that. If there should be another funding mechanism we ought to go after, uh, to get those, those dollars. So that's kind of, in those options, it wouldn't give me that opportunity to.
Sorry, are you, are you suggesting we throw C in that as well? Or, uh, we continue the discussion about what other possible sustainability?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to go with C without walking out here with a good understanding of what we would want to do to fund the sustainability. So I mean, yeah, I'm interested in that, but I want to know, you know, for example, what would that, if we went down the HRA thing? Is there enough money to, to fund at this level or higher? There's supposed to be other questions I would have in respect to that.
Other thoughts? And yeah, set the goalposts as we would, Councilmember Carter?
So I, I understand where councilmember Lemon is coming from. Because then when we had our first conversation around this, I kind of was feeling the same way, like it just didn't make a lot of sense to me. But as we had that conversation and as I've been thinking about it, um, improvements to the energy grid make a lot of sense to me. And so, uh, two councilmembers kind of questions earlier around the HRA funding. I mean, I guess I'd be curious if there were any other options other than the tax levy or the HRA levy. I personally would not feel comfortable going down the route of the HRA, HRA levy right now because we don't know what kind of federal cuts are going to come down the road. And I would want to reserve as much of that as possible. We have to like, for example, cover section eight vouchers and make sure people don't lose their homes. Like, we don't know if that's ever going to happen. But, um, with the unpredictability of what's happening with federal funding, um, I just, I don't know if I would want that to be an option on the table. And so then I don't know if there would be other funding options for the sustainability work beyond the tax levy.
That I'm aware of.
I was going to say, I would have assumed that over since twenty seventeen or whatever, when this work started, that we would have been overturning every rock to try to figure out some.
Councilmember Lemon, a question, Councilmember Carter?
So, thank you for that, I appreciate it. Because that was one of the concerns I was wondering about that. But one of the questions I have is when we look at, you know, maybe the sustainability piece, you know, yes, I can make the, you know, the church kind of makes sense or a synagogue and that kind of thing, so that kind of fits in there with the energy grid piece. But some of the nonprofits that are, you know, would be, be hit by this, I'm just kind of a little more reluctant about that. And I wanted to know what your thinking was around some of that. And I wanted to know what your thinking was around some of that and some of these other, certainly schools. Kind of makes sense, but I'm just kind of, because we kind of go down that, that pathway. That's where I'm running into problems.
So I guess my thinking is, you know, if those entities were, they pay a little extra in franchise fee, but then they take advantage of program if they were allowed to, then they would see energy cost savings too, very like down the road, right?
They could take advantage of this program too or not? It seems like it's more residential.
They can, I, we put it in the let's talk for businesses to also participate. Currently, we're piloting, we're working on an MOU that will be going towards council later in May to work with Enerchange, which is a energy audit service that is funded through the state and the utilities for nonprofits. And then being able to do some bonus rebates, which we're doing a bonus rebate pilot on the small meeting business side. So definitely, I think there's opportunity looking at models that we are piloting and then also other cities have done to be able to help with energy efficiency improvements in nonprofit spaces as well.
Let's go to DeLaSandro.
So to answer your question, Mr. Mayor, I'm fine with proposing. To, to me, it feels like, it feels like B or E potentially because we're, we're saying that the retaining walls are kind of a necessary, we're going to put it into a, a program similar to the other infrastructure we have around our program. To me, it feels like it's B or E, but I, I could live with A or E if that's what your preference is to bring back. B is the, according to this, is just the retaining walls. So increase it just for the retaining walls or increase it for everything and we could talk about that number. That would be my opinion at the moment. I did have a question. I, last time we talked about this, I did ask if anybody would be willing to go back to the utilities and ask them not to pass this along to consumers, but I'm just wondering if that conversation happened. I still, I mean, again, they don't have to pass it along. They don't have to. And we, I just don't know if anybody bothers to even ask them. It's just whether or not they're, I mean, especially when it comes to these sustainability initiatives, it feels to me like something that would not cost them much to get a lot of benefit as they are trying very, very hard to figure out how to deal with a grid that will become overloaded by magnitudes in the coming years. So I'm just wondering, did anybody, anybody do that? Or, or we have, do we have a plan maybe to do that? To just say, hey, guys, we're going to increase these rates, but we're not expecting you to pass all of this along to consumers because this is right within your wheelhouse when it comes to sustainability. Thoughts on that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, Councilmember DeLaSandro. So I mean, utilities monthly, I have not brought this up. I definitely have the context that we could have that conversation. Again, with ECO being so prevalent and the utilities investing money, which is probably required, it's, to my knowledge, we, cities don't really get additional funding. It would, it would be unprecedented. But if that question is something that council wants you to ask, that could be.
And I, I think to the councilmember's point, you'd never know until you ask. I, for one, would be shocked beyond words if they said, you're right, let's not pass this on to the consumers. But it's, I mean, you could certainly.
It feels to me fiduciarily responsible for us to just say like, hey, guys, you don't have to pass this along. You know, could you, could you not? And see if they say that. I mean, you know, but, and I'll say this for, for public knowledge as well. They can call their PUC and ask that not be passed along too, right? That they don't have to. I know we get blamed for all of this, but what we're doing is charging the energy companies for them to use our city and its infrastructure to do their business. That's what our franchise fees are for. And we're leveraging those franchise fees to do the other projects that we need to, to maintain that infrastructure that they then get to use. That's the point of a franchise fee, if I understand it. They don't have to pass that along to consumers.
And I, all solid arguments, Councilmember. I'd be shocked beyond words.
You know, stranger things have happened, so I'll just throw, throw it out there. Thank you. I appreciate you being willing to at least ask the question. I'm happy to join you if you prefer not to be the one asking that question.
So is that clear direction from council? You want staff to follow up with both of the utilities?
What do you think, Council? Do you want to bring this in? I, I think it doesn't hurt to ask, right? Yes, we're thinking to say no, and I likely will, so. Councilmember Carter.
I'm comfortable with B and then either D or E. I guess a quick question. I assume that if we did D, if we were to pass it to you this year, and then the next time this was up, we could decide to increase funding for sustainability at that time.
Yeah, Councilmember.
And when is the next time this would?
We're looking at every other year.
Every other year, okay. So we'd have 500 for two years.
Twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. For the piece on the energy companies, I think it depends on how we frame it. I would love how we frame it, maybe as a pilot program or something like that. Instead of just saying, hey, can you just not pass this on? I don't think that would go over well. But if we frame it as a program, hey, you want to be a pilot to do this for energy, insert conservation, it might be something that might be interesting. So how we frame it, I think, to me, is very important. Secondly, pretty frank here, I'm leaning heavily towards option A. I would like to have that as an option. Not purely just all options that are increasing. So if it's A, D, A and B, whatever, I want to make sure option A is on the table.
Well, I, I do think, I mean, to your point, Councilmember, I appreciate that and I don't disagree. I, I think we could say, I mean, option A requires no more work for, on behalf of the staff. But to, to, so that's always an option for us to say, no, we're not going to do any of these things. So I think we could do, I mean, if we were going to do three, if we included A, it's really only two because the third is, you know, a limited amount of work for staff. So we could do, you know, A and, and pick your letters and folks, B or E or C or E or C or D, however you want to do it. But I, I do think there, there's always that option for us to say no to, to anything, so.
Yeah, and, and I would, for option A, from what I've heard, it's not impossible. It just takes a lot of creativity to figure out. If we pause P to P or if we reduce it, what do we have to do to reallocate? And I want to see realistic options. This was what could happen if we choose to pause part of this, reallocate, or what do we have to do to, to get the funding to do that without increasing the franchise fee? So I want to see that work and the creative options we can come up with because I think this is just the start of the conversations that we have to have. Right? And I'm thinking, looking at it, fifteen bucks a year, fourteen bucks a year, that's a dinner for a family. So it's a dinner here, a lunch there. And I'm not just looking at it in, in dollars because it's easy to just pass off the dollars. But if I'm looking at it is, I can't feed my family four because I have to pay this increase. And then I can't do it again because there's another increase somewhere else. That's where I'm really starting to look at what are the necessities that we have to do with the short term to get us to the long term? Because we can't get to the long term. Everything we do to try to get to the long term doesn't matter.
All right, Council, let's try to drive the consensus here on, on, I think A gives us the option of anything. Very quickly, Councilmember.
A and B on my side.
Councilmember Lemon.
So I guess what I, I'd say is, I want to join the, the camp of the, of the As. That's part of the rationale with the HRA portion I, I, for, I'm very concerned by making this decision. When I'm making a decision today, we're giving direction for this. But what I would like to see, Mayor, at this is, I need to know more so what that N levy looks like because this, I, I add this on to, to what we're going to charge our taxpayers. And so that's why I'm kind of in the A camp. I understand the importance from sustainability. We need to kind of move forward with this. So that's why I, I think, to answer your question directly, Mayor, A is one of the options I look at. I think B makes sense and I think that Councilmember DeLaSandro makes sense. We, we should go with E because that is the one that funds all of it. It also funds the sustainability piece. So if there was an F1 where it was just sustainability without the retaining walls, I would probably look at that one as well, but that's not an option.
Mayor, Council, to stretch our address, Councilmember Lemon's question. This is our timeline and because we need time at the PUC and time for our utilities to get it into place, we would not have our final levy or through prior to base budget, that type of information before we would need to start the process through PUC and utilities to get it in because they need 90 days. UC needs period of time. So that's why we start this time of year.
I certainly appreciate that. Thank you for including that. I do remember that now looking at that, as I, as I look at that, that's another reason why I'm looking at, looking at A. Because I know we're kind of coming into some, we've got a lot of questions, you know, from the federal piece, Mayor, and a number of other items that are going to, that we're going to have to look at. And I'm just concerned if we make this decision this year, we may not be able to properly fund this. So for example, if we get further into the budgeting process, you know, rather than doing, you know, this, this amount, you know, the, you know, the, this amount here, we could, you know, triple that or double that to get quicker down the road on the sustainability piece. So I'd like to le- leverage as much as we possibly can, if that's possible.
So I think we've heard that if we want to include option A, it's a possibility. Any other thoughts on B, C, D or E? I mean, I've heard a couple of just. B, just the retaining walls, I think Councilmember DeLaSandro brought that up. It's kind of bearable and stuff. Councilmember Realize, what are you thinking?
A and B, I don't want to blower it too much, but A, I think A and B. B and B is very important. I don't think we should stop it in any form.
So I'm going to, I'm, tell me if, if people are okay with this, if we do A, B, and then we go to the option E as well, which could fund the, all, all that we've been talking about. And then that gives staff something as you answer some of the questions that we brought forward. And it gives council the discussion to have publicly at our open house and the council and opportu- or the, excuse me, the community the opportunity to weigh in on this as well. So is everybody comfortable with that? A, B and E? Is that enough direction for you, staff?
A, B and E. E, like an economy, or D, like a cave.
We're spelling Abe. Look at that, we're too well into that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Thanks for that conversation, Council, staff as well. Our second and final item on our agenda tonight is on 5.2. It's an update on our federal grants. And again, a lot of folks coming forward for this conversation. Ari Carlson, our Deputy Finance Officer. Sarah Able, I think will be sticking around as well. Dr. Nick Kelly with Public Health and Luise O'Neil, our Fire Chief.
Are we getting close? Spray it on with.
It's great, I don't have to crawl in. Thank you so much.
My eyes appreciate you.
Mr. Carlson, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then do you need to plug in? I need to plug in my laptop.
If you join the webex and share your screen.
All right. Okay, so, um, everything, Council. So tonight, as you know, we are seeing a lot of uncertainty with federal grants and changing federal priorities. So just tonight, I did hand out a large spreadsheet with, this is our schedule of federal awards, our official schedule. And we have the audited 2023 up there as well as we have an audited 2024 and some estimated 2025, just for reference. But tonight we'll be, we'll have an overview of the city's major federal grants and in the areas of housing, public health, fire services, and then I'm also the American Rescue Plan Funds and those projects. And so our goal is just to share where we stand today and just highlight some potential risks that we're monitoring and outline some strategies, potential strategies if federal funding changes. So you're going to hear from HRA Administrator Sarah Abe and then Public Health Administrator Dr. Nick Kelly and also our Fire Chief Luise O. Then at the end, it'll come back to me, I'll just walk you through the status of our pending, our remaining American Rescue Plan grant funded projects and just an overall wrap up. And then also, I believe we have our, yes, our federal lobbyist, joining us tonight. So she's available to help answer any questions related to federal funding or grant programs.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Good evening, Emily, welcome.
Hi, everybody. Thank you.
For being here. All right, so, um, I'm going to turn it over to Sarah Abe.
Good evening. Again. Good evening. Mayor, Councilmembers.
Yes, yes.
So I'll just go through the two largest HRA programs that are funded by federal dollars are the HCV program, Housing Choice Voucher Program, also known as Section Eight. Yes, so this is kind of a summary of what that program is. I think everyone is familiar with it. It is a really significant portion of the HRA's total annual budget. It's around six and a half million dollars that we get a year to administer this program. It is purely a federal program, so there's a very tiny amount of HRA dollars that go into this mostly for cash flow purposes. It's not, it involves no city, city spending, the administration of it, and the costs of vouchers are fully paid for by HUD through the federal government. The idea behind this is to cover the gap between what is considered affordable housing for a family and what the, the cost of rent is. And so we get around 500 to 600,000 dollars a month from HUD that is then paid to pay rent for households essentially. And so this program supports around 600 households, which equals around 1700 people. All of the money flows directly through the HRA. The HRA is directly designated as a public housing authority through the federal government. So it doesn't come through city accounts, it comes through the HRA. And then the last bit on this is staffing. So around three and a half stat FDEs work on this. It's, there are about six or seven physicians that work on this program and then funded through a variety of different sources. So, so, so strategies that HRA, I would say the HRA and the council could investigate. There's a couple that are already in motion. So the state has started a new program or allocated funding for a program called Bring It Home. So that is, basically, it's a, a state funded voucher program. It follows the framework of the federal voucher program. In fact, in order to be eligible to apply, you have to have, be administering a voucher program already. So we have applied for a fairly significant amount of funding through that program and will now await an award, or not award, in fall of 2025. Some other opportunities, the HRA could consider using some of its levy for a program to fill the gap, as I know came up during the last discussion. But the council approves the, the total levy amount, but then within that, the HRA decides and has control over the programming, what that looks like within it. Other potential funding sources, so the council just considered, I think it was last month, Laha Funds. An eligible use of those dollars is rental assistance. And currently, that is being allocated to the HRA also for administrative. An eligible use of those dollars is rental assistance, and currently that is being allocated to the HRA also for administration of those funds. But if the council would like to reconsider where those are being allocated, then that is another potential route that we can explore. And then just a note here that there are other programs that offer rent assistance, emergency rent assistance. However, we would anticipate funds in this area to be severely stretched if funding for this program disappeared. Not only does this fund the HRA significantly, but there are seven different public housing authorities in the Twin Cities region. And so it would have a huge impact. And nationally. The other major program is community development block grants. I won't spend a lot of time on this. I know the council just discussed this at your meeting last week. We just had the public hearing for the allocation of those dollars, but we get an annual allocation of. I mean, it varies a little bit, but it's usually a little under half a million. And then we have the program income that also varies widely depending on the year. And so most of that funding goes into the loan program. But again, this is a city grant, so we could make decisions to allocate that in different areas based on need. And then. Some strategies, again, I know this was a topic of discussion just last week, so I won't spend too much time on it. But there are opportunities to look at reallocating some funds in order to address changes or reductions at the federal level. That is the HRA question.
Counsel, I'll talk a little bit about some of our public health grants. We'll go to the next slide. We did have one grant that was terminated and then. In the court system now, but we've not restarted the work on it. There is about seven hundred thousand in funding between the three cities of Wilmington and Richfield. And to the great work of legal, we had some good language in our agreement that had just started. We were able to cancel almost immediately. And then we didn't, we were hiring for temporary staff that were going to do vaccine education work. On the next slide, we have some of our other grants. So our home visiting, it's five FTEs. Birth defects, it's about 1.2 FTEs, and we have a CDC infrastructure grant for building and developing the public health workforce. Our early hearing detection and birth defects funding supported about thirty five individuals to be screened and supported last year. And we have a handful of cases of perineal herpes that we follow up. It's on our reimbursement basis. Next slide. So our biggest federal grant is our WIC grant. And so on the next slide, you'll see this is a substantial, it's a two point six million dollars. Highlight of that, seventy three percent of that is our. The vouchers that go out for food purchase. So Walmart, the Cub on Lyndale, and Target are the three largest recipients of those vouchers. We're looking at who gets those vouchers in their community. We served about three thousand two hundred and thirty nine individuals primarily across Wilmington and Richfield. So this supports several staff on our team to do this work. A lot of education and supporting navigating, making sure that kids are not food insecure. The next slide. So as far as strategies we can evaluate and look at, WIC has been a cornerstone of public health programming for over fifty years. Most people have come into the public health workforce, understanding WIC and navigating that process. And so our first strategy, we work really closely with the state. This is directly linked to SNAP funding and processes that occur at the state with food support. We can look at policy changes for food insecurity. Most of the people that are on WIC have some job or employment that they still need food support. And so we can look at policy options to navigate that so that people are not. Underpaid on that sense and don't have the food insecurity. Additional supports to support breastfeeding. Our team does an incredible job supporting moms navigating breastfeeding in the community. We would like to be able to keep doing that if we see changes. Because that has huge positive public health impacts for the life of that young kid. Partner with food shelves in conversations with B, they are two week wait right now to get an appointment. And so anticipating that would be even a bigger challenge, but working with our food shelf partners to make sure we have food supply. We could also work with our employers. As I said, most of our WIC clients have a job or are working. And we can be working with the different business groups to try and make sure that we have better resources to support their workforce. In addition to work with our healthcare partners to navigate the challenges of food insecurity.
Good evening, council. And food insecurity in this line share this is safer. I'll go to the next slide. So the most recent three year grant's a little over seven million dollars. And you'll look in your column there, way down, shows three point nine eight for twenty point five. And that is. The eighteen that we have just hired as of April first, plus the eighteen that we hired two years ago. That eighteen comes off April of twenty twenty six. So the three point nine wouldn't happen in twenty twenty six, it'd be somewhat less than that. And then you get closer to that two point five, twenty seven, and then a smaller number for part of twenty eight, when the second group of eighteen comes off safely. We've submitted the first quarter reimbursement request for twenty five. Have not received it yet, and I did get an email tonight where we had been notified that FEMA was putting a a pause on reimbursements, that that pause has been removed. And that they're going to continue reimbursing at the same schedule rate that they were prior to that. However, I would counsel you to remember that this changes very quickly. From moment to moment, and so who knows what tomorrow will bring. And as our hope that we continue to get reimbursements as we, as we, as we apply for them. We got the last quarter of twenty twenty four without any problem. And so we've just submitted for the first quarter of twenty five, which does not include the latest eighteen that we just hired. So from my perspective, if if something happens to affect those grant funds, staffing is our top priority. The trucks and the stations aren't much good without people. And so we are looking at several different potential solutions with some other funds that we have. With some fund balances built up in them that we might have to use to offset that. Part of that also would come with perhaps changes in the the capital improvement program that we have planned. As well as deferring vehicle replacements. So, which is two places or one place where we take, take some of that money from is from our vehicle replacement fund. So the fire pension special revenue fund is the other place. So we're looking at that to be able to offset. Fairly significant part of the increase that we get, not necessarily all of it. We might have to do some more, for lack of a better term, gold digging to find some, find something else out there. Because it's a fair amount of money, as you can well see.
All right, and then I will give an update on the American Rescue Plan, ARP grant funds. This is part of the coronavirus state local. A lot of cities had some major revenue losses during the pandemic, including Wilmington with our lodging tax and admission tax. Which took quite a while to come back. Oh, am I, am I going to be a little bit louder? Okay, sorry. So American Rescue Plan grant, so as a review. This was passed in twenty twenty one to help communities recover from the pandemic. And provided funding to cities, counties, states, and tribal governments. And so this funding can be used for our public health efforts, helping residents and businesses that were affected by the pandemic. Also helped maintain essential government services. As I said, we did have quite a bit of government of revenue loss to fund our government services and also towards infrastructure. And so the rules were that the funds had to be obligated by the end of twenty twenty four and then spent by twenty twenty six. And so we received in two different tranches in twenty one and twenty two. Total upfront, we have the money, eleven point four million dollars. And so to date, we have spent nine million dollars of that, or I should say as of end of twenty twenty four. And so the way that that was allocated out, if you remember back when we received the money, it was five point seven million for government services. One point seven million for public health emergency, and then four million for water infrastructure projects. And so now we have about two point three seven million. That has not been spent, but it has been fully obligated according to the rules of the grant. And there's a lot of requirements for these grants, and they are audited, they're scrutinized by our external auditors. And so we have, we have everything is under compliance. And we have everything documented with the grant compliance. And then we submit everything quarterly on the federal ARP grant portal. We are confident that we've met all of the requirements how they stand right now. We did have an alert from the Treasury that there is going to be increased review of our obligations. But we, as I said, we're not concerned that we feel that we have met everything that's been sent out. And, but they did say there, there would be a potential to recoup the funds that they already gave us if they were not properly obligated. So we just continue to monitor for future guidance, and if they want additional documentation, we're ready to submit that. And then just wanted to go over these remaining projects, where they're at. So as of the end of twenty four, there is a temporary position that's helping out public health with a project. There's a small portion, just a, an upgrade for the public health, mobile health hub. We have with the HRA is administering some homelessness response eviction prevention. That was all fully contracted and obligated. We were using or we are using some of the ARP funds for battalion chiefs that were added on and that is going to finish up this year. There were some natural resource management projects and parks and recreation with the park improvements. There's a project that's, we have a small portion left for IT that we're working on. There's the Civic Plaza restroom project that's happening right now. That was a infrastructure project that was allowed under ARP grant funds. And then one remaining water utility project that's there. So just in summary, we just, we went over the main of the large grant amounts in this twenty million dollars. I also had the handout that has everything there. And just that the focus for this study session wasn't to have a specific, you know, conversation on reductions or anything like that. We just want to make awareness. I'm sure you've seen in the news and heard things, and we just wanted you to be aware of how this could impact our federally funded programs. So we're, you know, as you know, we're, and to share with the public and the council that we're actively prioritizing or planning for potential impacts. We're going to continue to monitor, we're going to continue to communicate as we learn more. And then also with the priority based budgeting process that we're taking on this year for the twenty twenty six budget, we'll use that as well. If there's anything that needs to, decisions that need to be made, make sure that they're thoughtful and strategic, aligned with the the city's values, community values. So with that, just sharing this information, we just have some questions that we prepared here, just any questions of clarity that you have? What stands out to you? Any feedback as we're looking into strategies or areas that you'd like more information? Places you'd like us to prioritize? Just looking for that feedback this evening.
Well, thank you all for this cheery way to end this Monday, Monday nights. Thanks for that. I guess the biggest question that I have, and you don't have an answer, but I think at least something to be thinking about. We talked about this at our HRA port meeting last week. If there are significant funding challenges or cuts at the state level, it's gonna, it's gonna work its way down to us. For example, when, if and when Medicare or Medicaid gets cut, it's a two billion hole, two billion dollar hole in the state. Two billions, but I, I don't know, maybe that, it's a big hole in the state budget, and it's gonna, it's gonna come down to cities also. And I, I wouldn't expect you to have answers about, or even an idea of how they might, how legislators might deal with that type of issue. But knowing full well that we're probably, in addition to this great work that you've done and really good consideration that you put into this. There will probably be additional considerations that we're gonna have to look at, depending on what happens at the, at the federal level as it affects the state level. And then comes down to the city level. But I know you've already, all have already thought about that, so I just wanted to say that. Councilmember Dalisandro.
Question of regarding the safer grants. I, I know that because, because the first grant was only going to go through twenty five anyway. We have.
Twenty six.
Pardon?
Through the quarter of twenty six.
Yes, right, okay. I was thinking about it from our budget perspective, that we were going to have to start absorbing the costs in twenty twenty six, right? So, so the, the, I guess the first question I have is there an expectation that? I mean, you're not gonna know the answer. I don't know why I'm asking this question, but I'll ask it. One of the, one of the questions I have in my own head is, you know, whether the changes that we might get from the federal government are, are, you know, stoppages versus calling, attempting to claw back the dollars. That's what I, that's a big difference, right? There's a big difference between like, we're not gonna go forward versus I expect you to pay back those dollars. And that's, you're not gonna know the answer to that question, like I said, but I, I think I'm operating on the assumption tonight anyway that we're thinking about stoppage of dollars. We're not necessarily thinking about, we have to give it all back. So with that in mind, if I think about the twenty twenty six budget that we are going to be working on soon. We are preparing to take on those first eighteen firefighters in twenty twenty six anyway. So would it be reasonable for, for? If we have been preparing for that anyway, is that, is that, are those dollars that we've been prepping for at risk also? Or are they part of the calculations you all might be making towards how to, how to address any shortcoming in the future? You know, because I, I would think that one way or the other, we've, we've all kind of have to have planned for the fact that the first eighteen of these folks are going to be paid for by us, you know, in our, in our budget in twenty twenty six. So how do those dollars? How are they, how are those dollars translating into like total impact, I guess is what I'm saying, like, or net impact, if you will?
Sure. So Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Dalisandro, so we did have, we do have a plan to use money from the fire pension fund that's had some really nice years of investment gains to, and it's, it's not the fund for the fire pension. It's our special revenue fund that we put tax levy money in so that when, when it is time where we have to make a large obligation, we can. And that we have that money set aside. So we have a plan to bring in some of that as we start absorbing these firefighters into the general fund. So that was, that is already part of the plan. What we might, like Chief Seal was, was talking about is we might potentially use some more of that money than we are intending to, like start that plan up, like ramp that up a little faster, you know? And also look at our CIP, our plan for our fire station remodels and maybe delay those, maybe push out some fire truck purchases a little bit. So those are the, the big dollar.
Okay, so that, that original plan for the revenue, the special revenue dollars is in place for the first eighteen anyway. What we would do then is look at whether or not we could absorb more of that, that funding. Or use more of that funding to kind of maintain the other eighteen that we're bringing online this year. Assuming that we don't have that safer grant to cover the the next three years.
That's one source, yes.
Right, understood. Okay.
Hold on one second. We in here?
Yes, Mayor and Councilmember. I think something else that this conversation will be to is into the conversations that we will have as a retreat and what your priorities are moving forward into that next budget cycle. So solving for fire may not mean fire has to figure out fire. If your priority is continue to respond by a certain time to a fire, then we know we need to prioritize the fire department at a certain level. And so we need to then adjust how we're going to do that across the city and how we fund things in the city, not just the fire department. So I just want to add that as something that we'll continue to talk about and figure out together.
Yep, okay. Thanks.
Do you have some questions, Councilmember? Dalisandro?
No, no, thank you.
House Member Mu.
Hey, Mayor, yeah, I'm sitting here and twenty million dollars can't come from just one spot, right? We literally will have to be scraping the bottom of the barrel for everything. Everything that we can, and that, that to me potentially is really scary because those are our dollars that are going to come back here. Because I paid my federal taxes, I want to come back to my, my town. My one question I really have is for legal, all our contracts moving forward, including language that allows us to get out of this, if federal funding gets cut.
Ms. Magrashar?
Mayor members, as Sarah can attest, because we were just talking about earlier tonight, we have very expansive termination language in our templates already that would allow us to stop with no notice, or excuse me, with no reason or any reason at all. But we are actually adding, when there are grant funded programs, specific language that says if we are midway through a payment cycle and we get the funds pulled back, that we do not have to make payment or anything once, if, if we get the pull, if we get the money pulled back from us. So we are adding more specific language. Sure to answer your question, yes, but we are, we're already in a good position.
Thank you.
Additional questions, House Member Carter?
Yeah, I'm just curious, so I just think about like when the pandemic hit, philanthropy really stepped up in a big way in giving. And I'm, I guess I'm just curious, are local city governments having conversations with some of our big foundations and other organizations to get an understanding if they're preparing for all of a sudden Section Eight vouchers are gone, WIC is gone? Maybe during the Farm Bill conversations, we had a huge reduction in SNAP and TANF and like, I mean, it could be really devastating for our communities. So I'm guessing, I, I guess I'm just curious if you all are hearing anything about foundation world and what conversations might be having, happening there.
Nothing that you want to hear me say. I mean, I've heard at the federal level that they're looking at tax exempt status, all those entities could be devastating to them. So I think everybody's a little bit gun shy right now and kind of watch it and wait to see what happens. Then we'll flex where they can flex to absorb, they can absorb.
Mayor, Councilmember Carter, we had a conversation with the P last week and, you know, they, they talked a little bit about the dramatically changing reality for their donors. They're not, a lot of their donors are in the smaller families. And they're getting squeezed in other ways and changing some of those donor patterns. We're seeing similar conversations with some of our other partners where other things going on, there's some realignment of corporate giving and other things that are impacting some partner.
House Member Rebus?
I'm just, I'm going to say something encouraging, although I don't have any tangible proof of it. I, I just got an email from the advocacy group from the National League of Cities. And what they're saying is that the safer grants, they have some good news in regards to that, that they, we might be able to get a hundred percent of what they have promised already. Again, you know, it's just up in the air. And they do have a list of senators and, and a House of Representative people at the federal level that they have contacted directly. So they're leaning on, on the fact that they, those funds will be forthcoming. But again, I just hear, I hear, it's just an email I got. And I got a couple of letters that they're also sending out to, to Congress and directly to the President to, to encourage them to maintain sort of the health, urban, house development and stuff. So I, I don't know, I just hope it's true and that it's, you know, that we continue to get those funds, just for, only for our sake, but for everybody around us. So it's a big push and I have requested from the city managers information that, and for the county also, on regards to the grants that we have been getting. And I have also sent letters to, you know, especially to the Republicans that I have met. So there's a group of Republicans on both sides, the House and the Senate, that we have been contacting consistently, weekly to encourage them to vote for those funds to continue to come to the cities. So the National League of Cities is really involved in that. And I got lucky that I got called to be part of the, the federal advocacy group that is doing this. So it's really nice to learn all this stuff, I mean, whether it will materialize or not, I can't promise that, but it's there. So it's encouraging to read that stuff. Hopefully, we don't have to fund all those firefighters, you know, for now. I mean, I know it will come in the future, but I hope it works, I hope that, that, you know, they vote for it. I mean, including the, the money funds, also bonds, I mean, money bonds, those are also part of the thing that the National League of Cities is pushing to Congress and Senate. So, I mean, I hope it works. You know, we don't want to be missing any firefighters or sort of a help that people get out there with their health. You know, assistance that they get, so I'll see what happens. But I mean, it's very encouraging. You know, I wish I could share the stuff that is too much letters that it takes a lot to read. Yeah, so it's, I, I mean, I'm encouraged by it, I hope that it does work and that we continue to get the funds. I mean, I, I think you, both of you and the accounting department have been very gracious providing the information for me to, forward to the National League of Cities. And it's, you know, it's, they're pushing, they're making a big effort to make sure they can get those funds. I hope that it does work, so I got that.
Want some additional questions, comments? House Member Nelson and House Member Lo, House Member Nelson?
Yeah, this is very quick and I don't need an answer to it, but we have another project that we talked about with our working capital. In my mind, this changes that in terms of how we approach that. And because I think the needs may, may vary, so I just ask that this information be incorporated into that study that you're working on. So that we are making sure that we under capitalize ourselves given the risks that we're facing.
House Member Holland?
Thank you. Thank you for this, this presentation and this update that you've given here. So I just shout out to my fellow council member, glad you're working with the federal advocacy with NLC. It's great, the contacts you have and your voice there. Glad to have you there at that level, through that network, it's helpful for us to think. So this, as I look at this, Mayor, both the sheet that we've been provided here and then also the slide presentation we got, I guess the thing I think of is hoping that we can kind of move forward. I know part of the issue run through with municipal government is when you use the word flexibility, then you run into regulations and that kind of thing. So I'm hoping that we'll continue to be flexible as much as we possibly can. And then I'm hoping that, you know, as I look at the, you know, the fifty-six and a half staff that are there, we really can kind of protect, you know, those staff members we have as much as possible, whatever flexibility that we have. And then it kind of goes for me and into those vulnerable residents that are out there. I look at all the health type of things there, some of the other departments kind of have other ways that we can leverage for it, but you know, we don't necessarily have a dedicated way to kind of go after that. So I'm particularly concerned about the WIC and any of those things that kind of fall into that because those folks are already really kind of facing a difficult such a circumstance situation. So I just hope that we're able to, to really with those folks kind of look at that. And then the other, I kind of put this under my bucket of concerns, Mayor, is that, you know, we have, you know, as a community come together and can put together strategic priorities. And my concern is that there may be some challenges to some of the things that we have as a community kind of said, hey, this is what we believe in. Here's what we're trying to, trying to fund. And I just, I'm hoping that we can figure out where that proper balance is, if that, that does come to light. And I'll just leave it at that. And then finally, Mayor, again, not necessarily today, but I, the markets haven't been doing great. And so one of my, my fears is that, you know, obviously not this year, but you know, in future years, we may have, you know, have to make some contributions to that, that pension fund. I know we've got the balance there and that type of thing, but I am concerned that, you know, the perfect storm happens where some of these other things kind of disappear and we've got to then kind of move this and that around. And then we're, we're in a position where we find ourselves in a couple of years back to back, like we did a number of years before I was even around. I know this is one of the reasons why we did this, but I'm just, I'm very concerned. We talk about that flexibility as we look to do this, that we just be very careful as we move forward, knowing that, you know, it's not just this next year, it's, it's future years as well, and certainly concerned about, about those future years, we, we, those future years.
House Member Mu. The last piece, I think, Mayor, I want to make sure we still do, is continue chasing grants. Whatever they're opening up, I hope we're still chasing them. It's just because we're worried about the stuff that we already have, I don't want us to stop. Every single dollar we bring back in is something that I want to chase after, even if we know it's going to change. So as long as it's still open, I would still like us to continue doing that.
House Member DeLaSandro?
Just a quick question, I apologize, I should have asked you, Dr. Kelly, before. There's a fairly big number, five hundred and eighty thousand in the CDC infrastructure grant. And I don't, I, I apologize, I don't remember what you said that was for. Would you mind just articulating that a little bit more, what we're using that for right now?
Mayor and Councilmember DeLaSandro, that is a fairly siloed funding stream for building. So right now, we are partially funding a position that's also funded by another grant. In using that, that grant goes through almost the end of twenty-seven to manage that staffing cost. We're partially funding a staff member.
And the other, so, so I see that it, with the other half a million or so that's in there, or is that not correct?
That, we had a project.
Okay. Yes, okay, understood. So that's money that's already been impacted essentially, okay, thanks.
Senator?
My last comment, I think. I guess I'm just thinking about how we communicate this to the community. Whether or not we do, or when we, if something happens and we lose a substantial amount of funding and need to communicate that out. So I'm assuming that those conversations are also happening in, in downtown City.
Interesting you brought that up, Councilmember Carter, because that was going to be my next comment, because this, this is, this is big stuff and this is important stuff. And it was, it's going to be a topic in the council minute on Wednesday. Just the potential, what we've talked about here, this is a public meeting, so what we're talking about here is going to be part of the council minute and explaining this in, in detail, what the impacts could be. And, you know, we, we look at our firefighters, obviously, that's an enormous impact. You know, the defined grant, I always look at the fire pension, the bottom of the page holds the Community Health and Wellness Center geothermal and our solar projects, that's eight point eight million dollars that very likely will go away. If all this other stuff goes away, that's going to go away as well. It's going to impact the, the sustainability efforts in the Community Health and Wellness Center. But to Councilmember Loan's point, I mean, I look at some of these numbers of households impacted and I'm most worried about the six hundred and eight families that would be impacted with Section Eight housing. Where the eleven hundred families by temporary assistance, needy families, eighteen hundred families with WIC. Those are the folks, I mean, there will be actual impacts here. This isn't, this isn't, we might be another few minutes slow on the, on the, on the, on the response times for fire or we don't get the solar panels on top of the Community Health Wellness Center. These are people whose lives are going to actually be impacted. And I fully intend to talk about that on Wednesday, and I think we should all talk about this as openly as possible. This, the, the relationship and the, the working balance between federal and local has been, it's long established. It's based on trust, it's based on shared goals, like making sure people have enough to eat and people have enough to, a place to live. And that public health is a really good idea. Long run, public health is probably a really good idea. And to see that eroding right now is something that's just appalling. And it's, it's breaking, breaking agreements that have been in place for sixty years now, even longer. I mean, if you, sixty or seventy years. And to see it, to be, to see it be pulled apart like this in such a haphazard and frankly cruel way is, is, is really disappointing as a, as a public official to see this happening. So I'm going to talk about it. I think we should talk about it as a city, I think we're not, I'm not going to be shy about it. And I'm encouraged, Councilmember Rebus, if you, if your folks at NLC are saying good things, I'm glad to hear that. I would like to see more of that and we just have to continue to keep up the battle, we really do. And with that kind of as a summary, Emily, do you have anything to add from DC?
Well, I, I just think, for one, this is just such a thoughtful exercise and I really sincerely commend the city for spending time on this because it is very, you know, chaotic, there's lots of things going on, there's lots of information, misinformation. And so spending the time to really just, you know, have a baseline understanding of where threats are and where opportunities are, you know, if needed, is really, is a really good use of time. Because it is, you know, you can only control what you can control and so being as prepared as possible, I think, is the right move. I do, you know, I think that preparing for all of this is good. I, I think we are seeing somewhat trends that things are getting at least unstopped or, you know, unfrozen. Then there's a lot of, obviously you've seen this, you referenced it earlier, a lot of legal action around this. We are watching very closely to see, you know, if we can get any heads up where the trends are going, things like that, to make sure we're, we're communicating with staff on a regular basis on that. But I think I just want to add that, you know, some of these things that we're, we are seeing a more of a trend of things being unfrozen. And I'm not trying to be, you know, say in this Apollianish way that, you know, everything's going to be okay and we shouldn't worry. But it is at least trending in a more, with the safer example today, where things are unpaused. We're seeing, when we're talking to congressional staff, we're hearing a lot of word out of DOT that things are being unfrozen. So again, we're watching very closely and I think it was said earlier very well that things are changing from day to day, but they seem to be changing more often as, you know, as things move forward with, with unpausing of funds. We hope that trend continues, but once this, the next step of the reconciliation process, you know, when Congress really digs down in this budget, that's where we're really going to see where, where cuts are going to come down for future spending. And hopefully, you know, they, they will honor what has been allocated already. And I think that the advocacy around that is really strong and really felt by cities and, and states as well. And I think that progress is, is hearing a lot from, from their constituency. So that's, that's a good trend to keep up as well.
Thank you. Council, any questions, Ms. Trancher? Thanks for joining us, Emily. Go crack it with all those young staff members, get them working harder.
Right, thanks.
Thank you. House, anything else to add on this final item on our agenda this evening? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So, motion by Councilmember, a second by Councilmember Rebus to adjourn this evening. Further, council, we have further council discussion, Councilmember Nelson?
Are you going to do a summary of the listening session?
I was going to do that the next time at our regular meeting, but.
Fair enough.
I was going to.
Turn into a regular meeting.
No, we don't, we don't have council issue updates, I, I, it's on this. We have a motion and a second on the table and a, a second on the table to adjourn. Any further council discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Period, seven zero, thanks for the conversations, thank you, council, well done. Stabbed, thank you.